Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our October 17 City Council Day. We'll start out with our moment of silence. First off, Mrs. Alpau is under the weather and not with us this evening. Brad Hawkins is still in recovery from major surgery, our streets superintendent. And we want to be mindful of the passing of Buchanan Upsher High School student Janet Davis this past Sunday evening. Let's keep all those folks in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers. Lieutenant Loudon, we don't get to see your smiling face very often. Would you mind leading us in the flag of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks for being with us on this chilly mid-October night. The first guest who has signed up to speak, and then we have Dennis Cordis that wants to also address us, is Bobby Monroe from Datamax. Bobby was here about two years ago, I want to say.
A little less.
Gave us information on how we might be doing better with collection of certain taxes that we impose. So do you want to take your podium and remind council again? Bobby's mentor and protege is Jim Hunt, the longtime mayor of Clarksburg and past president of the National League of Cities and also past president of West Virginia National League.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me to come back. My name is Bobby Monroe with Datamax out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I'm going to drive back tonight and run down here, so it's about a little less than five hours. But we love West Virginia, and we've been in business for over 133 years doing third-party collections. Since I came mayor last time here, we only had a handful when our first came in of cities. And now we have every city in West Virginia with the exception of about five. And I was telling a couple of council members tonight what we've done in West Virginia is a little over $3.5 million in new revenue for West Virginia. And what we do actually is we find businesses coming into Buchanan without getting a business license. And these companies are from Florida, Texas, North Carolina, South Carolina, New York, Florida, everywhere. All the ones that are here right now are your businesses. They already pay business license, they pay VNO taxes, and those will always remain yours. And the ones that are here will never hear about Datamax if we find a business that's coming into town that's delivering to your college or to your school or to your hospital. We already have a relationship with just about every business that you'll get each month. We'll send you a list. Once we get a list from Ambi of your current businesses, we will then send you a list every month of 15 to 30 new businesses a month that we find that we will call and collect on. Ambi and her folks will never have to get on the phone and call and collect from any of these businesses that we find. We do 100% of work. It's 100% performance-based. And that means that once we send out your business license and we collect on your behalf, you get the check first. And that's what cities really like about what Datamax does for them. And, you know, you'll never have anybody else walks through your door and says, hey, we want to come to work for Buchanan. Before we do, we're going to pay you first. And then, once you get paid, we share in that revenue. That revenue split is 50/50 split. Right now, you're getting zero. And the revenue's cute, but what's even bigger is to get those 15 to 30 businesses in compliance because right now, all your brick-and-mortar businesses that you guys have currently right now that you're doing business with, and they're doing business here in your city, they're paying their fair share. But they're also pulling the weight of these companies that are coming in from other states that are not paying their fair share. So Walmart, it's a prime example. We have a relationship with every vendor that's in Walmart. And typically, when we come into a town or a city, we'll call up one company that's inside of Walmart, and they'll say, okay, Bobby, where are you guys now? We'll say, we're in Buchanan, West Virginia. They'll say, okay, you know, tell us what we owe. We pull your ordinances off the website. We calculate the fees. We make sure that we're right because we're talking to that company, and we're saying that we're showing this number of sales for you. Is that what you're showing? And they'll say, yes. And then they'll say, okay, we'll send the check directly to Buchanan. We'll send out your business license. And when Ambi gets that back, she'll have a little DMX at the top right-hand corner so she'll know that came from us. And then a check will follow that information. So she'll get that check, deposit that check. After she deposits the check, then we will collect our fee within 30 days wherever she gets it. So we sent 30 businesses in one month. Let's say that Ambi only received 28 checks. She'll email our company back and say, hey, we didn't receive these two checks. We'll get back on the phone, not her. We'll get back on the phone. We do all the calling, all the collecting, and then we'll collect on those other two that we didn't collect on that month because they didn't come in. We'll collect on those the following month. So the cost, it is performance-based, and we do all the calling, all the collecting. That process really takes that away from Ambi. I was just talking to Ambi, and she was like, I said, how are you doing? She said, oh, I'm doing great, just very busy, you know, wearing 10 hats, just like, every city clerk, every finance director does in every city across your state. And the nice thing about this, it will not interfere with what she's doing on a day-to-day basis. Code enforcement, they will still go out and they will still find the guy pouring the concrete slab down the street or painting the building down the street or putting up a structure or whatever. We'll never find those guys. We find the companies that are coming in out of Florida, Texas. Give an example, Hurricane, a little bit larger than you guys. The second day that we were doing business with them, we found one vendor out of Florida $98,000. Ripley, I always say, believe it or not, Ripley, West Virginia, they're about the same size as you guys. I think they're like 6,600, I think, so maybe 1,000 more population. The second month we were doing business with them, we found one company, $66,000, $67,000 one vendor. For Morgantown, in less than eight months, we found them over $600,000. Charleston, Huntington, like I said, we have everybody except for you guys. Philippi, which is supposed to be coming on in November. Wareton is going through a lot of different changes with their administrative folks there, and they're coming on board with us. Parkersburg, everybody in council came to the conference a couple months back and said, we need to be doing this. The mayor said the same thing. So we're trying to get them on schedule so I can go and talk to them in council. And let's see, it's Buchanan, Philippi, oh, and Martinsburg. That's the only other one that we don't have. But everybody else, we just brought on Bridgeport and Fairmont about three weeks ago, but everyone else.
Elkin, Western.
Elkin, Western.
Clarksburg.
Everybody.
You got all.
Yes, sir. Everyone. And we, you know, we met with the municipality league today, and they told our owners they've heard nothing but great things about us. There's only five states that do what you guys do, the service that we provide. It's West Virginia, South Carolina, Alabama, Kentucky, and Washington State. I've just started going out into Washington State, and it's tough on a 55-year-old man to fly that red eye home like I used to do 30 years ago. I'm going out there, and we've already, we signed up one municipality the first time I went out there. I'm going back out there this coming Sunday for the whole week. Kentucky, we're there. We're not going to go into Alabama. Their ordinances are totally different from the other five states. But you guys are very similar to Kentucky as far as how your ordinances and everything are set up, and the statutes, you know, allowing you guys to collect the current year plus the five years going back for penalties. But then in South Carolina, you know, we have over 50 cities down there, and then here it's, I think it's around 40.
Remind us about how long your commission attaches.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So if we started, I always use the current month that we're talking in. If we started out and we sent you 30 in October of 2019, we will share in that fee for two years. So in October of 2021, we will drop off. And then those 30, you'll get 100% of all the proceeds that will come into the city. November, another 20 to 30 will drop off. December, another 20 will drop off. We've never had anyone leave us because we're bringing in revenue. We're bringing in new clients every month to the city. So Lexington, South Carolina, I was at a conference last week down there, and Lisa told me, she said, Bobby, she said, I still can't believe after about eight years of doing this with you guys, you're still finding, you know, 15 to 30 new businesses every month.
Because as new enterprises come into a particular market, you check those guys out too.
Right.
And you say you go back five years?
Yeah, the statute allows you guys to go back the current year plus five.
And let's say theoretically, you find somebody who's been around four or five years and haven't paid. Do we get 100% of that, or do you share that?
50%. We share 50% for two years, which each one of those businesses that we send you for two years, and then we drop off after that two-year mark.
But what if you go back retroactively for four?
Whatever the amount is that we collect, we get 50% of that.
What do you have to go back retroactive?
Yes, sir. And that's up to the city as far as how you guys go back, but every city in West Virginia is taking advantage of the statute of going back the full five years.
Sure.
So let me ask you, if I see a bread truck or some soda truck, Pepsi or Coke at Walmart, and they're coming in there, they're, one, supposed to have a business license with the city because they're selling wholesale goods, or?
Well, I always use this portfolio for, if this is Buchanan, this portfolio right here, everybody that's coming in, no matter where they're coming in from, if they're doing business in Buchanan.
Selling.
And revenue is going out to those companies, they're supposed to have a business license.
How would that impact a company like Amazon or someone, you know, if I was?
Yeah, Amazon, FedEx, UPS, they're a little bit harder to collect on. We have collected from them in certain cities. It is kind of a hit or miss because they always try to go under the radar as much as they can. But even your post office, you know, the companies that are coming in delivering to the post office, you know, they're supposed to have a business license as well.
Right. So if we're taxing the wholesale delivery of products and we're taxing the retail sale of the product, isn't that double taxation, or?
Well, and Ambi can probably look at me. Your wholesale outfits are a little different. We can't collect on wholesale unless they're selling retail goods, and like for your food companies.
Right.
If they're selling, you know, salt packets or, you know, forks and knives and stuff like that, that sells. But as far as, you know, wholesale is a little different. You can't.
Like, if I buy a 50-pound, 70-pound box of beef, that's wholesale. But if I buy a knife, knife spoons kit, utensils, I don't do anything to that. And so that would be retail sale.
Everything has a category, absolutely. And like with US Foods or Cisco, I mean, we already have a relationship with them, and so we know what qualifies for wholesale and slash retail. And one of our owners actually came from the food business, so he knows, even based on what the type of restaurant is, who all they're buying from.
Would it be fair to say that there's an expectation among these companies that are dodging, below-the-radar screen, these taxes? When they come to a place like ours, when they're paying at every place else, they just kind of like, you know, phew.
We don't ever get any pushback from them. We really don't. And like I said, and True Value is kind of one that has thousands of vendors, thousands of companies that they use. And we have so many of them down in South Carolina, that the owners have never reported back that those companies called and said, hey, I got to go up on your nuts and bolts because I just got caught doing business illegally there. I know I've been selling you nuts and bolts for 27 years, but they're getting me for the current year plus three years is what it is in South Carolina. So really, they're just waiting on a phone call because, like I said, I mean, the Walmart one vendor that we find every time that we come into town, you know, it's usually been anywhere from $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 each time that we find, you know, Walmart in the town or city. But we just call them up. We know them on a first-name basis. They'll just say, where are you? We'll tell them, Buchanan. Say, okay, what do we owe? But if you guys call them, they'll go, what are you talking about? We're good. You know, we don't know that. But we know what the sales are, we know what they're doing, and we know who they are. Just same thing for your schools. We know exactly for a high school who the companies, who the vendors are. But like I said, your current retailers that are here, they're paying like what they're supposed to pay, but all these other companies are coming in and not paying what they're supposed to pay. You know, we get them and comply.
So let's talk about schools for a second. If they're ordering it from the schools and the schools are outside the city limits, but they're paying from the board offices which are inside the city limits, is that?
That goes back to the wholesale. Wherever, if it's a distributor coming in for the schools, if it's a vendor that's coming directly to the school, which there's a lot of that that's going on that you don't know about, these vendors will come in from different states, deliver the product, and then the school board then, you know, sends out revenue to those companies, they're supposed to have a business license. They're supposed to be paying.
Your question is, is the point of contact is if it's Buchanan Academy as opposed to Rock Cave.
Right.
Buchanan Academy, that vendor should have to pay, but the ones outside the corporate limits probably wouldn't pay.
Right.
Unless they're going to the Board of Education.
The physical point of delivery.
Right. That's right. That's right. It has to be in the city limits. You know, if it's not in the city limits, then, you know, if they deliver anywhere else, they don't even ever hear from us.
Doesn't matter where the check is actually keyed off on?
Well.
Apparently, it's the delivery.
Well, it's where the revenue is coming from. So if the revenue is coming from Buchanan to another company that's not a wholesaler, that company is supposed to have a business license. And the wholesalers, like I said, it's a split. And we know who the companies are, and we know what is wholesale and what is retail.
I think when we talked about this, you know, I was thinking a few years ago, but if it's less, whenever it was, I can't remember if we reached that point in our conversation where you sent an agreement for us to look at.
Yes, sir.
Can you resend that to Ambi and our city attorney, Tom O'Neill, so that they can weigh in?
Sure. It's just a one-pager. Absolutely.
We could put it on an upcoming agenda and let the council consider it and let us sleep on it for a while in the process of getting that agreement.
Right. Absolutely.
Counselors, that sounds like an acceptable course of conduct. We'll take a peek at it, have Tom and Ambi both weigh in, and as early as November, we can take it up.
And if you guys vote us in, then, you know, in November, we will find revenue, and you'll start receiving revenue in November. You'll have a list by the 20th. If we get the agreement by the 10th of November, I don't know how that falls. If not, it would probably be the following month.
Our next meeting, our meetings in November will be November 7th and November 21st.
Okay.
Whenever you.
Yeah.
Quicker to vote.
Yeah, if you vote on the 7th, then you'd have revenue, and Ambi would have a list of 15 to 30 new businesses.
Does this require an ordinance, or do we have to just?
No, we're not collecting a new tax. We're collecting an existing tax. So it's just a mechanism to collect.
Authorizing an agent.
Yeah, it should not require anything other than the council approving it by motion.
Well, like I said, Buchanan will never receive an invoice from Datamax ever. You will get paid first, and if you don't get paid, we don't get paid. And we will actually be your first client that's on that list because we have to have a business license, and we pay as well. So we'll be your first client.
Tom and Ambi, does that sound like an acceptable course of conduct for us? As soon as, the next week or two, whenever Bobby can get that to us to study, we'll study it together and take some action.
Sure. I'll get it out tomorrow, and you guys will get it tomorrow.
I don't have your emails. You go back to Carolina tonight, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, safe travels.
43,000 miles on my CRV, and I've had it for nine and a half months.
Wow.
But thank you all. Appreciate you coming in. Good to see you guys again.
If you want to stay for the meeting, you can.
We're going to have a voting permit here shortly. It's exciting.
Dennis Cordis is asked to address council on telephone issues and problems that we can all relate to. Dennis, you want to address council?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to put the camera on myself. I know Halloween's right around the corner. I still don't want to swear to you. Seriously, we have been inundated lately with call after call after call, and usually they're dead air or they are people offshore somewhere, like, for example, New Delhi, India, wanting a whole lot of personal information. And three times this week so far, the call came in under the city hall phone number.
Yeah, I get it.
What can we do?
I've taken calls at my house using my own telephone.
I believe it.
Imagine that. It's, Dennis, I wish I had the answer. I truly believe it's the federal government's demands that have to be placed on telecommunications companies to come up with better, I mean, Congress has been having hearings on this stuff. I guess they're tied up with other, more bigger fish to fry these days, but I understand the frustration. I've gotten a call just about every day for the past week on, is this David? Well, David, you got to get up awfully early in the morning to get ahold of you, and we've got some great news about your federal student loans. Well, I'm going to be 62 years old.
Yeah. They haven't paid us off yet.
I mean, it's ridiculous. Or this is Roger from Microsoft, and like, Roger, go, go, you know. I usually use some choice words and, you know, end the conversation, but I get it. I mean, it's, yeah, all early in the morning, late in the evening, it's, I'm surprised they don't call in the middle of the night. Oftentimes, they don't even talk English.
What you should do is say, you know, just one minute, and then set the phone down until it feels dead.
That's what I did two days ago. I got the same thing Dave McCauley did, yes, about the student loans, and I just laid it there.
It's ridiculous. I get it. I guess we could write a letter to, we're seeing Joe Manchin tomorrow. I could say, Joe, we got a pressing problem here for you. Maybe we should write our federal representatives and say, you know, count us in with, is that what you'd like us to do, is get the attention of the feds?
Sure.
I'll take a crack at a letter.
They won't do any fun.
I, well, we've got.
Last thing we're going to use, another hearing.
Red Dews and Berries here about once a week, where we could, Congressman Rooney can help us all by taking out the.
Red's done a good job for us for the last 40 years.
But I hear you.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
We'll take a crack at a letter or something. Does that sound acceptable, counsel?
Yes. And when you're talking, Dave, when you're talking about that, Mayor, also, it's a time of the year where you're going to start getting a lot of phone calls.
Charitables.
To give money to charities, and I just wanted to let people know that normally the telemarketing is subcontracted out, and they get most of the money, not the charity.
Well, the state FOP called just last week, and I hung up on them too. And then it was the State Troopers Association. I hung up on them, you know, so when the blue lights come up on the McCauley car, I'll go, oh, I should have, I should have given them 10 bucks. Yes. We're not affiliated with any of that anymore, isn't that right, Doug? We've distanced ourselves from any of those.
Yes. Our large launch, 114, will not be making phone calls asking for donations. However, we have asked media to advertise that we are seeking donations for the Christmas weekend comps event.
If you remind me, I'll contribute to that thought. All right, Dennis, we're on it.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else want to address council? Those are the only guests I had either signed up to tonight or in advance.
Is there any college students?
Oh, Mr. Graves is here. We do have a Wesleyan College student. He was sneaking in behind out there. Typically, what we do is the student has to stand, face the camera, give us your name, hometown, and your major course of study at the college. So this is Darryl Graves, another track yard at the college.
Hi. My name is Darryl Graves. I'm Baltimore, Maryland. I'm studying accounting and business administration at West Virginia, West Ham.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. I brought all your friends with you. Fall break, nobody else was around. Department and board reports. First up is our information coordinator and grant writer, Kelly Cronin-Sams. Kelly, how's it going?
Great, thank you. I have your report in the packet, and it doesn't seem like it showed up very well this time around. But if you have any questions, of course, just let me know. We shared a lot of information as we usually do, both on the website and in social media. I've continued to just put the information from Facebook and the website in here because I have, they both provide a little more data to me that I can look at through Google Analytics on the website and through Facebook's insights. But we are continuing to use Twitter and Instagram as well, as well as our YouTube. And we have, Elizabeth Stover did a little trailer video for the Volunteer Center's Community and Kindness Day, and we'll be looking forward to putting out the full-length video on Community and Kindness Day. So that's one thing we're looking forward to on our PR side of things. Also, I'll have information out about all the upcoming Halloween-related events, the Dracula production at the Colonial Theater, that's up on the website, so definitely check that out. And then there were just some general, getting the information out about city hall being closed on Kindness Day. And we have a position opening in the Parks Department, and that position is closing tomorrow. So if you have anyone that would like to get an application in, the deadline on that is tomorrow. Let's see, in the grant world, been working with some of the schools to get rain barrels, the high school with union, and one other, Rock Cave was interested in that. So that was a grant opportunity that I came across through my email, and I sent it out to the schools. That was specifically for schools. I asked if we could use it at Stoker. I explained what a close relationship Stoker has with the school system, but that was a thanks, but sorry. And so I did pass it along to the schools, and I'm trying to help them with that. I've also been doing some reportings from some of our past awards, both of the REAP awards that we received, and litter control and recycling have had reports due, as well as the Volunteer Center. I'd already mentioned our video we were working on. Other than that, with Volunteer Center, Gabby's doing a great job, and she's going to be continuing to reach out now that Community and Kindness Day is over to other service nonprofit organizations within the community. And we'll be working with the fire department to schedule our next round of CPR trainings that will be free for all volunteers in the community that are working with a nonprofit. CJ had also passed along, I think Tammy and Laura had passed as well, an opportunity through WVU for some fitness-related funding. So I've been researching that as well to see if that might be something that we can use especially for our, it said it would support, it's only one of the $5,000, but could support any kind of infrastructure that would encourage physical activity. So something along those lines, and we'll be talking to Jerry to see if there's anything in-bread that we might want to do on that. Been working with Dixie and Deborah to spend what we have left with that family's leading change funding and creating a little nature and garden reflection area, thinking of actually having that over at City Park since the area right next to Stoker could. Hopefully, we hope sometime soon, maybe a little bit of changes there with hopefully the new multipurpose facility. We're still awaiting word back on the AML pilot and the FEMA grants. Let's see, a few others I'm waiting on, not for to hear if we get an award, but still, every time I check on that COPs grant program, mini-grant for the junior VIPs, it still says coming soon. So I continue to watch that, and a few others there you see. And then I've got our event listing. Of course, I mentioned Dracula, but there's also the Stoker haunted house, I'm sure Deborah might talk about as well, on the 25th. On the 28th and the 29th will be the zombie walks, with the 28th being the children's division and the 29th being the adult and teen division. So come dress up as a zombie and walk down from the Colonial Theater to Java. dress up as a zombie and walk down from the Colonial Theater to Joban Park, and there will be judging, and that will be a fundraiser for the Colonial renovation. Trunk or Treat, the Buchanan Police Department hosts that on the thirtieth, and I'm sure that's gonna be a hit again, they always get a lot of people out. And then Trick or Treat right on Halloween, in city limits, six to seven-thirty, and afterwards in Joban Park, the Buchanan Fitness Center, Melinda Lewis are putting on that Thriller Flash Mob, and that's to benefit the animal shelter and love for animals. And then just looking ahead a little bit, Stalker's Elimination Dinner will be on the eighth, and I'm sure Deborah will mention that again. Forgot to mention it when I was talking about PR stuff, but I am gonna be working, just a reminder, we've got that Google Calendar right up on our front page, I'd like to do the same thing, I've been talking to Deborah and Michelle about it, having a calendar for Stalker, too, either on their webpage or on the subpage of our page, so that people will be able to easily see what fitness classes are available in the evening, what's going on during the day, where the kids, and that sort of thing, and just the hours for that fitness center that's upstairs. And that's most of what I've been working on.
Questions for Kelly? Chief Kimball remarked in a meeting that we had earlier this week that some other agencies had been notified of their acceptance on the Safer Grant.
I've been watching, we hadn't gotten an official turn down, at least last time I looked, but I haven't seen them add any more to that list, we're never adding week by week, so that could be an indication.
I think the fiscal year for that particular was September thirtieth.
Well, that could be a different event.
Yeah, it may be a no-go for us.
No way.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments, any areas of inquiry for Kelly? Keep up the great work, Kelly, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Stalker Director, Deborah Brockman. Deborah, how's it going?
Very busy, actually. We've been having basketball cheerleading sign-ups this month, we have another one scheduled for November the fifth, and then we'll have our Skills Day on November the sixteenth at the high school, and after that, we will get the teams put together, and then we'll start practices. So that's going to be, we'll steam ahead here shortly with basketball. Been meeting about our haunted house that we're having next Friday night, we're going to be decorating next week, starting on Wednesday, and if anybody wants to volunteer, we would glad to have, be glad to have you, just stop by.
I shared a time last year.
We have been advertising for our elimination dinner, our tickets are on sale now, so if anybody here like elimination dinner tickets?
See you.
Yeah, see you. They're everywhere.
You're collecting commission over there? Awfully, awfully high-pressure sales over there.
How much are the tickets?
They're twenty-five a piece.
Or if you wanna sponsor...
Table's for two fifty. Yeah, two fifty, I'll put you down for a table, David.
Two tables.
We have, we have five tables sold so far, so we're doing good.
I got one table sold, and hopefully another one, but I'll know tomorrow.
Oh, I don't know that.
How many tables were there?
A lot.
Well, the place holds three hundred and six, eight, it's an odd number.
Thirty-seven tables.
Times eight, so almost three twenty, or whatever that comes out.
Maybe forty.
Forty, forty tables?
About forty times eight is three twenty.
We did thirty-nine.
I think we issued three hundred tickets, so...
Thirty-nine tables.
Well, they don't have to be there, you could sell them tickets, it just takes, I think the junior football sold six hundred, it just takes twice as long to call all the numbers.
Right.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Are you doing silent auction or anything, or regular auction?
Yes, we'll have auction items, and then the graphic items.
If you want pictures, let me know.
Okay.
I'll send it to you.
Oh, okay, you would like them.
You thought you were gonna show up with cans? Pictures to make you money.
Yes, just put us down for...
Yeah, we're doing fifty-fifty, aren't we?
Yes.
And we're doing the tip thing.
Oh, yes, the tip things, yes. Right. I'll be making a trip soon to get those.
City Recorder's gotta have something in his attic that's good, you know?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. We may not wanna know what they do.
And also, Deborah, you might want to mention, they can buy a ticket, and if they can't come, they can come up and pay their meal.
Yes, we have options.
Roast beef, baked potatoes, green beans.
That's pretty good.
But the beef's so good, you think you eat it.
Burn it, right.
Yeah, it was very good. He's a rock star with his...
Good stuff.
Clifford, you're a rock star.
Hey.
Mike's a nice guy.
That's why some people are buying the tickets, they wanna...
The beef is very good.
That was great, that was great last year.
The other thing I wanna mention, it's just been such a busy, busy time with all, one thing after another with all our activities. We've been looking at a new software program, we've never really had a software program that would do the billing and the billing scheduling and things with the employees, and the kids swiping in, swiping out, the parents when they pick them up, helping with the scheduling of games, and just everything that most recreational centers have, we are basically pen to paper. And we've been looking at software, and we did have a demo, Ambi, Michelle, myself, and we loved it, it would do everything but, you know, push the buttons for us, but it's pretty pricey. So, been continuing to look, there's a couple more that we've found that are, seem comparable to this, we don't know price on them yet, so we're going to have to do a demo to see what that price is.
You say pricey, what's pricey?
It would be almost ten thousand dollars to implement it and for the first year, and then after the first year, it's seventy-five thousand. I mean, seventy-five.
That's pretty high.
We may need to call Bobby back in here tonight.
Seventy-five hundred a year.
A year.
Really?
Wow.
That was a little pricey on those four years.
Yeah, the bowling year is...
I thought, but we're still, we're still looking, but I just wanted you to be aware, we talked about this a while back, so we're, we're progressing towards that. And for September, our youth involvement hours were thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two.
That's amazing.
That's awesome.
Questions for Deborah? Keep up the good work.
We're willing to switch.
Talk about a Stalker-related thing here in a little bit, you can stick around or not, that's your... Next up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. How's it going, old buddy?
Very good, good day. Water Department continues working on the new entrance for the electrical service. They repaired five leaks last month, and they're painting, working on painting hydrants. Sewer Department, Crew One continues to work on the CJ Mark project, they have completed about eleven hundred feet of this line. Crew Two completed sewer upgrades along Spring Street and replaced the line through the parking area of Travis Hall Street building. Maintenance crews making adjustments to the UV unit, and the plant crews been removing sludge and doing normal maintenance. Sewer Department, we will continue to work on the South Spring Street sidewalk as weather permits now, but the sewer line's late, and we're working on sidewalk walks along Madison at the corner of the... Waste Department, there's nothing new to report, and under engineering, Jay, Buck, and I went door to door in the proposed project area to survey residential customers as to the need of public sewer out along the quarter age, proposed quarter age project, talked with residents and left surveys for the ones not at home. As of last Friday, we have had about a thirty percent response event survey, and of that thirty percent, about twenty-three were positive in courts, public sewer.
So three, four, stone, one.
Exactly.
And it's, I think Jay indicated in the sanitary board report that with the ones that have come in since last Friday, we're up to forty-one percent, and it's still about twenty-three percent for and seventy-seven percent against.
Exactly. And that's all I have, Mayor, most of the questions.
Questions for Jerry?
Jerry, I see a letter from the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers about the dam. You from the...
No, I haven't even read it.
Okay, that is true.
Jerry, I want to talk to you about Gate Street, the entrance, about the columns, is that...
I have not got, I have not got any of that, and like I said, I don't believe it is, but I haven't got to investigate that further yet, but I don't believe that those pillars are actually going right away. I think they are off the city right away, but I will, I will double-check that, and you can get back with whomever's asking.
Did you say Gate Street?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry? Thanks, Jerry. I forgot to hit the reset button on Lurch last night, just a reminder. He messaged me while I was having my salad. Oh, yeah, I'll get right on to you.
You're a drow.
Ambi Jenkins is, her title's many things, but it should be Director of Finance and Administration, not his finance. Ambi, what do you got?
Very short report, balances for your enterprise funds September thirtieth, water board, three hundred twelve thousand, three hundred fourteen, that's in your money market checking. ACP funds remaining seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-one, that project is really essentially nearly complete. Their CDs, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, two seventy-two. Sanitary board had six hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred twelve dollars in money market checking, CDs, three hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Waste collection board, six hundred seventy-two thousand, two thirty-six, and they only have one CD of fifty-seven thousand, five forty-six. And the Consolidated Public Works Board had a hundred and sixteen thousand, three seventy-seven, and the cemetery CD remains at two hundred and thirty thousand, three forty-eight. There was no abnormal invoices really to report to you when you get to the part of approval of payment of bills. I'll just comment, I did have a brief discussion with Christie Tanny, Upshur County Commission, they sent draft agreement concerning the Fire Department, but it also had in the draft agreement giving, gifting two trucks to the volunteer fire department, and she kinda wanted to know where that stood, and I talked to Tom a little bit about it, I told her, I think, first of all, that if she has an agreement, it probably needs to be separate volunteer fire department versus city of Buchanan's, gifting of whatever they want to do, and I suggested there may be more questions, and rather than a third party try to explain it, perhaps someone from the Upshur County Commission should come and explain the city's agreement that they want to enter into. So, still a few questions, but that may be on a future agenda. I just, I wanted to let you know I did talk to her about that.
Questions for Ambi? Thanks, Ambi, always the first one here in the morning in the last two, it's always that way. Matt Gregory, you got must-have important soccer match to attend to tonight, am I guessing right, Doug?
Yes, he does.
So you're left holding the bag, old buddy. How's it going, Doug?
Yeah, good. I'll try to be brief, but the concerned citizens from North Buchanan neighborhood have been meeting weekly for the neighborhood watch meetings. Each meeting has been attended by one of our city police officers, and they've discussed neighborhood watch program, and in general, crime reporting tips in particular. Police Department was hosted to approximately ninety students and parents from the Upshur County Homeschool Program on October ninth for a tour of the police station. The police will also host forty-nine students from Washington District Elementary School on December, or October twenty-second for a tour. During the week of October twenty-first, the police department will be visiting pre-K through second grade students in schools for our annual Halloween safety program. This program discusses tips for safe trick-or-treating, as well as providing students with safety materials such as reflective trick-or-treat mag and collaring books. Police Department, in conjunction with, and Kelly touched on this a little bit earlier, in conjunction with the Fire Department and other public safety and community organizations and businesses, will once again host a trunk or treat at the Public Safety Complex on October thirtieth from six to eight p.m. Our newest officer, Colin Coe, will be graduating from the West Virginia State Police Academy on November first. He will then begin a twelve-week field training course, once he returns back to duty on November third. And then during the week of November eleventh, the chief now will attend the Kalia Conference in Covington, Kentucky.
And the accreditation effort continues to go terrifically.
Yes.
Appreciate all of that, lots of time.
Do we have a projected date when we may get the onsite evaluation, another...
We will do a mock assessment next year, and then after that, twenty-twenty-one will probably be the projected assessment.
Keep up the good work, tell the guys to be safe. Any questions for Lieutenant Love?
Pedestrian safety, so we had another accident up here, and I'd like to do something proactive, try to train our drivers that, you know, if you're in a crosswalk, you yield to pedestrians in crosswalk, I mean, they're, in other parts of the country, this is a cultural norm. It's, for whatever reason, it's not in West Virginia, and what, we know what's happening, people are getting injured, what can we do about it to convey that this is something that we take seriously? So I'd like to, in the future, come back and tell us what, what strategy or techniques we can employ to try to convey this message to the public.
I would say, you know, and this is just off the top of my head, using the media, not only, you know, news, newspaper, Channel Three, Channel Twelve, Channel Five, you know, advertising maybe some traffic, traffic safety, PR, you know, things to do with them to promote it, 'cause not only is it a driver's responsibility, but also pedestrians, also, you know, one of my biggest pet peeves is seeing people, you know, looking down at their phone, walking down the street into the crosswalk without paying attention to someone coming traffic, so...
Yeah, well, they'll suffer the consequences. Person in the car is generally fairly well-protected, but I was thinking more somehow, how do we, you know, enforcement of the existing laws to get the message across, but I'll leave that up to you guys.
Problem with no solutions, that's very anti-CJ, I probably...
You know, if you want some.
I was over in Elkins last weekend, and the area of town near the hospital on, what is Harrison Avenue, where they completed that new bike path, with a bridge that crosses over North Randolph Avenue and comes down, and then, and on the Martin Street, that is lit up in bright, bright neon green, and the traffic that goes through there, 'cause it's a big strip across Harrison Avenue, the traffic through there is kinda like, what is that? And they are slowing down to, to, to look at it, because it's something new, and it's not just your typical white cross across the street. It's, you know, it's bright green, and it gets your attention, and it goes, and it's a strip that goes all the way down to the depot, it's not just across the street there. Maybe some, I mean, Main Street is a state highway, so is Harrison Avenue, Route Ninety-two over there, so if it can be done over there, could we maybe look at something like that to create this, this, this path that would be known as...
If it's a bike crossing, that's why it's bright green. There's also, if you notice, there's also a hashed white pedestrian crossing.
Right next to it.
Right next to it. That is, that hashed white pedestrian crossing is, it's kinda like your regulatory signs for parking, and it's internationally recognized as a crosswalk, and it also, when you have service dogs, they recognize certain straights...
And it also, when you have service dogs, they recognize certain stripes. And the current, the current use, crosswalk use is just the ladder bars. There's, if you notice, they're, they're doing away with the laterals to the ladder bars, it's just a straight ladder bar. That's why that one was as green at Elkins is because it is a designated bike crossing. And it's, it's identified as such.
We have that issue here too, so.
But that speaks to just exactly what Doug's saying. You know, we, we are constantly striving to be a more pedestrian friendly facility or city. And, you know, we're talking, Callie and I are talking about painting, share the road on our, on some of our streets and identifying some preferred bike routes in town. And again, we're, we're putting more pedestrians out into that right of way. And ultimately, you know, it's, it's just like with folks requesting children playing signs. And, and I'm against posting signs because people become complacent to those signs if the kids are not playing. They drive by and they see the sign, well, I don't see any kids playing, so the next time they come by, they're at normal speed. Whereas, and I know Dennis has one of them, I seen it in his yard, they have these little things you can put out up the road when your kids are playing. And, and that draws your, and as you said, with that color on the, on the pavement over there, that automatically draws the driver's attention because it's something new, it's bright, it's flashy, and they're, they're recognizing that. But the, the solution to the problem comes down to, just like CJ said, you can go, for instance, in Gettysburg at the roundabouts. If you, if you set two or three cars back in that line of cars and watch, as soon as a pedestrian's on the curb, they stop.
Right.
So it's education, and, and I think that's what we need.
Yeah, both. It's a combination, it has to be a combination of both.
I know in, in Front Street in Marietta, there's a large sign going over, yield to pedestrian and crosswalk. So maybe those old...
And that crosswalk's in the middle of the block, too.
Yeah, the old street sign brackets where we hung, we must have had got state permission to hang the street signs off of those. Maybe we get another permission and put, or under the stop signs or something else, yield to pedestrian and crosswalk. And just keep getting to make, because I bet if you ask licensed drivers and they say, if you had a stop sign and someone walks out, who has the right of way? Well, I'm in the car, you know.
I'm bigger.
At least that's the way some of them act when I step out in front of them. And they roar off the, roar, you can tell by the RPMs off the line whether they're mad or not.
I have thought I'm going to address to both the council and Doug here. If you guys want to put together an instructional video, I will dedicate my, I'll donate my time to tape it for, for, for you all on Channel 3, both.
Hey, you tell our story, YouTube videos.
We could put it on the city website, too. I, you know, I wonder whether signs at the primary entrance points to Buchanan, welcome to Buchanan, a pedestrian friendly community, or, yeah, just keep raising the level of awareness and try another letter to the college students.
When you walk out of the front door of Walmart, you have an understanding that those cars are going to stop.
Most don't do.
I mean, yeah. Now, and you got to remember that every customer to every downtown business is a pedestrian. And the vitality of those, all those retail establishments are going to be access and safety. And so the more that we focus on it and strive on it and enhance it, the better off everyone is going to be, so.
It's a chip away thing. Five or six different things in combination may improve our situation.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll try to develop something a little more concrete, approach it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Lieutenant Love? Thanks, Doug. Appreciate you. Tell the guys to be safe. Correspondence and information, Council, you get all kinds of stuff in your pocket. Can you revise the notice and timelines with the home rule applica... Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. That's all right. He's going to say, I've got important matters to take up with you under strategic. Tom, you're up first, then we'll do correspondence.
You're welcome, Tom. My add-ins are under strategic. No, I mean, actually, most of what I've been working on the last several weeks is, is on the agenda for discussion later on, but it's been all focused on issues for the sanitary board, for the fire department, for the police department and Kalia, and a number of other things. So I, you know, we've been dealing with some, some issues that particularly you have correspondence in, in your packet that relate to, particularly with respect to matters related to the sanitary board. Be happy to discuss those now or later, whatever your pleasure is.
We wait till we get down to 30 minutes or so. Thanks, Doug. Correspondence and information, revised notice and timeline for home rule application for our time firefighters, we're going to take that up in a little bit under strategic. There's a mayoral proclamation, Christian Heritage Week, the governor does a proclamation and asks cities to join him in those proclamations, and we have. There's the hearings during the dedication of the best bench in Jobbo Park on October 5th. There's a FOIA request from the City of Buchanan to both the Hodesville and Tenerton Public Service Districts. There is a report, the Buchanan River Routine Inspection Report from the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And there's a flyer that Callie alluded to a little bit ago on our community calendar events and especially Halloween activities coming up. Consent agenda consists of three items that I solicit your approval of. The approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on October 3, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of payment of the general fund bills. May I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Certainly.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. I have a second, I have a second by Mr. Ryland. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign motion carries. And now we're down to the future matters. First up is addressing and mapping of Ritchie Street. Jerry, were you going to talk to?
I, you had that on your, on your minutes last week, and this, this, and I'm not sure. Well, these folks are here to talk about it. We sent out letters. We had a request from the, from the postal service to address the Ritchie Street. There were some issues with the Ritchie Street addressing, particularly from, about Randolph Street up to Barber Street. The numbers ran in both directions, essentially is what happened. It started Ritchie Street addressing actually starts from the College Avenue Ritchie Street intersection, and then graduates in numbers up against towards the river. But on the other side of Camden Avenue, we had some numbers, and I don't know how they got interjected. I think what happened is at some point in time, they were assigned based on Barber Street and Fayette Street cross addresses because they are similar numbers like 117. For instance, 117 and a half is, Barber Street is actually between Fayette and Barber Street, or Ritchie Street is between Fayette and Barber Street. 117 is between Pocahontas and, and Camden.
And 7 is the, is the ranch style house right behind the Upstate County Schools garage.
Yes.
So that's 7, and just in one block later, it becomes?
So what I'd ask Shavel to do, because in the spirit of the original ordinance, is we did not want to change addresses unless it was absolutely necessary, and as a matter of safety and to eliminate the confusion, which there is confusion on Ritchie Street in this area, I asked Shavel to look at it from a perspective of who's the least affected? How do we do this and be least affected and continuing the number from College Avenue? And she did that, and there's, you have the list, I believe there's six, with six addresses identified. So we did that, and we had in the, in the process that we normally use, we sent out letters to all of the folks that would be affected with this address change. And asked if anyone that had questions or opposed to the address change, come to this meeting.
Okay.
So that's where, that's where we're at. Like I said, I'm not sure, but I, these folks may be here for that.
I'm looking for a letter to the Gould. Oh, there we go. 117 Barber Street, right? So you guys want to speak to this as, as to your thoughts on the matter?
We just want to know when they're going to do it.
When they're going to be changed, or if they're going to change or not.
So we won't get confused.
117 Barber Street, and that's a corner lot, 117 Barber Street. And based on the recommendations from the 911 addressing, it should be addressed as to where the main entrance is. So 117 Barber Street, the main entrance actually faces Ritchie Street. So that's why, why it would be changed, or why we would recommend it be changed. As far as, as far as effective dates, it would be effective immediately, but with postal service. See, again, just because it's a physical address doesn't necessarily mean that the postal service has to use it, but they do. They've requested, yeah, and they've requested us to, to make these changes based on what we were talking about, the 117 and 117 and a half. It's just, it's a, it's a complete mess right there in that area with the addresses. And as these properties continue to get subdivided with garage apartments and that kind of thing, it just becomes more and more of a problem. With, with Barber Street, with their address in particular, or that corner lot, you could kind of go, I, I really am not pushing, changing it, but according to E911, it would be addressed because right now their, what would be preceded of their main entrance would be off of Ritchie Street. However, from, and I, I can't speak for fire, they're not here, but I'm pretty sure Doug, if he gets a call to 117 Barber Street, as long as that number's on the side of the house to where it can be clearly seen, I don't think he's going to be confused about how to get in the house. So, so I'm not real, that's not really one of the problem areas, but from looking at the total street, that would be one if we went back to the E911 addressing. That's what we would do, was change that. And to speak to how long you have, the postal service usually, or will deliver to that address, the old address, a year after the address change is made. So you have, and I went through this address change myself three times. I've had my address changed three times, so I know what's involved in, in getting things changed over. But that's where we're at with it. Like I said, we've had, I've, I've talked with a couple folks that really didn't want their address to change, but explained to them that, you know, one of which was 117 and a half. And 117 and a half is definitely one of the addresses that need to be fixed.
This goes all the way back to 9/11 and the establishment of Homeland Security and observations on approving delivery of emergency services. And I don't know, when did we do that ordinance? 1012 years ago?
Yeah, it seems like forever now.
But it, it was, it was a federal mandate that was sent to the states, and then the states said counties were requiring you to implement this. And then there's an opportunity for cities to opt out of the county plan, which is what we did in Buchanan. So it fell into Jerry's lap about 10 years ago, I want to say. Does that sound about right?
We took the position at that time, and like I said, by ordinance, it was decided that we would identify problem areas and address them on one-to-one basis, not go out and, and, you know, if there's an area that's become a problem or an issue, and again, you rely on your emergency service folks bring that up, or the postal service to bring that up, or just out in utilities, and we see there's an issue, we've tried to address those. The biggest issue we have is identification based on people not displaying their house numbers.
Yeah, which they're also required to do under the ordinance.
Yes.
It's something we don't harp much about, but everybody should have their.
But that is the big problem we have with identification. There's not so much addresses. If you remember the original, if we, if we did not have an ordinance, every, every address in the City of Buchanan would change that.
So to answer the Gould's question, if we act on this tonight, and I, and I don't hear you saying you're opposed to it, you just want to know when it would take effect, right?
So we won't get confused what we do about it.
Yeah. Would it be effective immediately, since this is by?
The address, the, the address would take effect immediately, yes. We would, we would send out letters, both postmaster and Terry Jupin, the county, and say, the, the new address is this. And, but as far as the postal service is concerned, like I said, there's a year's grace period on an old address, so they will deliver to the old address for a few years. So you have that time to change things over. And I, I know that the DMV would like for you to change your license immediately, the address on your license immediately, but I can't say that I did every time my address changed. I waited until it expired and then.
I noticed, it looks like three of these properties are rental properties.
Yes.
And one of the properties of the seven, I think, is owned by the Board of Education?
Yes.
So council, you've heard Mr. Arnold, and it's his recommendation, as I understand it, that we go with these addressing changes with those seven properties in Ritchie Street area. I'd entertain a motion that we redesignate to be in compliance with both federal and state law, those seven addresses on Ritchie Street. I have a motion by Mrs. Buckle. Now, I have a second or a motion? I have a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
So this does not include every single address, because the, the even side of the street on the left-hand side, if you're going from college toward the river, those remain the same. 2468 there on the left-hand side remains the same.
Just there's.
Just the right-hand side.
Because again, it was trying to just address and, and make it the least effective in changing, you know. We don't want to cause any more people, any more heartache and that too. But that was, like I said, it brought our attention by the postal service.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign motion carries. Thank you, Jerry. We're going to talk, I'm going to ask her in a, in a short executive session here in just a bit, but I did want to report that the Stockard Youth and Community Centers Board of Directors unanimously recommended to the council that as part of our new building initiative directly beside the existing Stockard Youth Center building, that we pursue the acquisition of a property, that an overture was made to the city several months ago about the property, and we've been negotiating a sale price. I'd like to talk with you in executive session about that. Tom, do you want to say anything else about that at this moment?
I have a letter of speech for itself.
There's a letter in your pocket that we'll take up. When we're talking about property matters, it's one of those things that the Open Governmental Proceedings Act allows us to adjourn into executive session so that we're not negotiating in a public forum, we're talking about our next step with negotiations. So we'll, we'll come back to that shortly.
That'll be at the end of the meeting, too.
Yes, yes. F3, and a couple of these, when we get down to the participation in the Treasury Equitable Sharing Program, I'm going to count on Amby to, to tell us about that. You, you may have read stories in the paper. We were kind of surprised a few weeks back with the county commission scheduling a matter to reconsider our utility territories along US 33 West, beyond the corporate limits, basically all the way out to the top of Bapa Cannon Mountain. We've had an excellent group of folks who have represented the city in the matter, Tom Manille, and Sam Ludlow, and Buck Samples, and Jerry Arnold, and Amby Jenkins, and, you know, a number of council folks have been there, and we've all weighed in at one point or another. There are primarily commercial folks out along the north side and the south side of US Route 33 that are seeking at least universally sanitary sewer utility. US Route 33 that are seeking at least universally sanitary sewer utility. And the folks on the south side of 33, a handful or so of those developers are seeking water to those sites. Understand that that's in the exclusive domain, assigned territorial rights recognized by both the county commission and the Western County Public Service Commission. That's all City of Buchanan territory. Well, there was an overture made by one of the county commissioners to one of the public service districts to come to the county commission and to solicit having that territory taken from the city and reassigned to the Tenerton Public Service District for sewer purposes. We, we've been very zealously countering that position and trying to protect our territory and our opportunity to grow to the west of our current corporate limits. We believe that one of the, the third model that was approved earlier today by the sanitary board should make most of the issues that are before the county commission moot, because the sanitary board resolved to add a third model to the consideration of things, which would be a surcharge model, which would allow us to basically begin to develop the project immediately. And we've already been developing the project as far as that goes. But to start construction with the beginning of the 2020 season in March, we believe that by this point next year, the sewer work on the north side of US Route 33 would be completed. And we plan on being very aggressive and zealous in pursuing that project. So there is a meeting before the county commission on October 31. And Tom, and Jerry, and Ambie, and all the usual suspects will be representing the city's interest. But essentially, it's our position that this is largely a moot point, that we are going to develop this project. It's in our territory. We have a plan ready to go, which is going to be a fourth of the time, the earliest opportunity for development of this project by Tenerton was in 2023, I believe. And we're going to have it done by the end of the 2020 construction season. And we're going to do it in a much more affordable and efficient way than what was being proposed by the Tenerton Public Service District. So that's a little bit about that. Tom, what else do I, what else do we need to say about this?
There's been, well, I think we can talk, maybe we could just mention briefly the survey that had been done, that, that part of Tenerton's approach has been to do a kind of a universal project for that, that area of the, of the county. And in order to make their numbers work, they would have to include the residential area of Lawrence and Bridgerun and, and a few other areas out there. That based on a survey conducted by our folks, only 23% of the, the individuals who were surveyed indicated they are interested in, in having sanitary sewer service. That certainly doesn't, I don't think that, that is sufficient interest in order to put a, a mandatory system out in that area that they would be required under law to have come to. A number of people have, you know, aeration systems or septic tanks that, you know, they've made significant private investments in. And, and I don't, in any event, I think, I think the, the community response in that area to the survey indicates that there is not the kind of public interest for public sewer in the residential zone that, that Tenerton has represented is necessary in order to make their, their numbers work.
Let's, well, let's start.
I would add to going, being present at that meeting, a meeting that we, as, as he articulated there, that we were there to listen to. I was very proud of Jerry and Tom and, and Sam Ludlow for our representation there, for, for not having a presentation prepared, because we weren't asked to have a presentation prepared. We weren't even sure what this meeting was going to entail. We just went because it, it had interests that overlapped with us and was our interest. I thought they did an exceptional job of, of dealing with that meeting and, and the folks that were there. And I'm looking forward to the 31st. I think, I think we will have our pencils sharpened and, and have a presentation ready that's exceptional. And I do want to thank them for going door to door in that area, because the overture was made that these folks overwhelmingly want this service, and we've found out that that's different. So.
And there was a lot of misinformation associated at that commission meeting, which was very unfortunate. Let me, let me speak to that. The, the first two models that were proposed to the commercial, potential commercial customers along the north side and the south side of US 33 was, look, in, we'll pass the hat, the north side is a $300,000 project. The better part of a year ago, sanitary board said, if you guys come up with $200,000, the rest of the project will be borne by the sanitary board. And so some of the folks out there are, will pay whatever it takes to get sewer to this area. And other of the players are just sitting back and saying, well, you guys pay for it, and we'll be happy to get that sewer. That's sort of the way it's.
We want it, we don't want to pay for it, and we don't want to be surcharged.
Yeah, and it's not the way it works. The other model that I offered up, and, and we've affected this model before with Walmart, Lowe's, Cambridge Heights, and the new Armory. If you come into our corporate limits and participate, like all of the other businesses and residents do in Buchanan, I would advocate to the city council that the general fund undertake these utility improvements. And we'd do a bond issuance or some, some mechanism to come up with that somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars to deliver water and sewage to the entire area. The general fund, the city of Buchanan would do that. We're trying to explain to some of the players that the general fund, the city of Buchanan, we, we can't undertake improvements for the city of Elkins, or the city of Weston, or any place outside the corporate limits. We are prohibited by law from doing that. The only way the general fund could participate is if those properties are in the corporate limits. The Water Board is a separate entity distinct from this body, the general fund of the council, as is the sanitary board and the waste collection board and the consolidated, those are, they're, they are in fact arms of the city, but they are separate statutory corporations. They can do things outside the corporate limits that the general fund cannot do. So that, again, the, the two models that were originally identified, annexation, general fund will pay for everything. Generally speaking, these commercial developers have said, we don't want to be annexed. Okay, fine. Then pass the hat, come up with these monies so that we can develop a project. That's method number two. Well, they didn't like that idea either. They didn't want to have to pony up 20,000 bucks a pop. It, it came down to, basically, we want this for free. And the best things in life might be for free, but it's sure not public utilities. We, we, in order to be true to our customer base, those folks that have been paying the freight, we can't just absorb that cost and deliver utilities for free to anyone. It wouldn't be fair to the Mike Rosses of the world who have contributed on various utility projects. It wouldn't be fair to the C.J. Martins of the world. So that, that's kind of where the conversation has been. So another way to skin the cat, and we did this 25 years ago out on the Brushy Ford Road, in addition to your regular monthly utility bill, you would have to pay a surcharge, an extra amount, that we would finance over the course, the model that's being floated is a 20-year period, where those folks that would have these utilities developed would have to pay an extra amount over and above the regular bill to realize the utilities. We don't, we don't need the permission of the county commission or of the folks who are in this territory to effect this surcharge. We would need to get the approval of the Western County Public Service Commission, who generally speaking, has smiled upon the way that Buchanan conducts its utility functions. So we think that's the best way to proceed. And that's what we're going to advance on October 31st, and that's what we'll continue to advance until we have a successful project. Are there any? No, I'm sorry, Dave, you were gonna, you, I, I was on a roll when you were trying to say something.
No, I was just saying, at that meeting that Bob Robbie was referring to, there was a lot of misinformation that was put out during that meeting. Not from us.
I, I, again, there, there have been some contentious moments over the past six weeks, but our staff has universally behaved very cordially and professionally, up and down the line. My hats off to all of them. And we wouldn't expect anything less, given the team that we have. Does anybody else have any questions?
Tom, have you received responses to your two letters to these public services?
I have not, and I'm, I'm prepared to take it to the circuit court, as is our right under state law.
Good. I think it's unconscionable that you didn't get a response to those letters.
I, I think it also needs to be noted that if we were not the players in, in this particular project, all of the residents and businesses that are in, that are paying customers to Tenerton and Hodginsville PSDs, which both or either one of them, if they were to be awarded this project, their, their bills would be surcharged, all of them.
Well, the rate base would go up.
Right.
It's not a circuit.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So their rates would go up, correct. Okay. Their bills would go up each month, even though they have nothing to do with this project. So if you are Mrs. Smith in Tenerton, or Mr. O'Neill in Tenerton.
We're also $220,000 behind.
But the, the, the sentiment has been expressed that it's not fair to these benefiting parties to, to require them to pay for the line construction. I would suggest that it's not fair to not require them to pay for the line construction, because as soon as that line goes through, the property values are going to go up by tens, if not, tens of thousands of dollars, if not more. Immediately.
There's no development without utilities, and we're not, we want to work with players that want to develop this community. Our performance history is, makes it very clear, we're best positioned to extend these utility services. It's not even close.
I, I said it in the county commission meeting, maybe nobody heard me, because my voice goes down sometimes, but this is just one more nail, as far as I'm concerned, for metro government. And I'm sure you'll get tired of hearing this.
So that's your update, folks. We, we'll, we'll, our team will be prepared to protect our position, the city's position at the October 31st meeting.
We'll be there.
Where Jay Holland says he and Sam Ludlow will start applying for permits on the sewer project tomorrow. So it's, 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 it's going to happen. F4 is a fiduciary agreement regarding the Mountain Lakes Drug Task Force. Couple of years ago, we became a primary party to the task force. There's been, they don't have, the, the entity does not have the wherewithal, and we're the most substantial participant in this task force. Essentially, we're going to receive the funds and have a special line item. It's not going to be part of the city of Buchanan's accounts per se. We're essentially going to be the fiduciary for the task force. So that's what this agreement is about. Ambie, have I botched that explanation, or have I spoken directly?
That's pretty clear. They'd ask us to be the fiduciary agent. If accepted, I would have to set up a separate account and keep it completely separate from the general fund, or just the entity that would receive funds and expense funds on behalf of the Mountain Lakes Task Force. And part of the requirement of that is that we would have to participate in e-sharing according to the Department of Justice. This is all according to Department of Justice rules and regulations.
We had Tom review the agreement. And Tom, do you find it to be adequate?
Yes, the agreement's no problem. The, the forms that are attached are Department, United States Department of Justice forms that are no, they're no problem.
I did, just as a note, talk to Bridgeport, because they're the fiduciary agent for their area.
Yeah.
Task force. And they've said they've not had any problems. It's pretty simple, and right now it's zero. They have no funds, so it's pretty easy to manage right now.
Are we the only municipality participating in the Mountain Lakes?
We have, so, neither departments.
Braxton County Sheriff's Department and Upsher County. Right now are the only ones participating in it at this time, because some of the other agencies are too small to contribute. But we had Lewis County Sheriff's Department involved. Gilmore County would be part of it if they could, you know, assign somebody to that. And Weston PD would also be another agency. So eventually, when their ranks grow, they might fold somebody into that position.
But Lewis County and Weston are not.
Well, Lewis County was, but they withdrew. But, but there, there's an opportunity to have that reconsidered. And Weston has shown some renewed interest of coming in. They initially weren't part of the task force.
So are you looking for a motion to?
I am.
I'll, I'll move that we accept this.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner and a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Now, Ambie, tell us about this Treasury Equitable Sharing Program.
Same thing, it's part of this very same agreement. In order to participate in the equitable sharing, we have to apply to the Department of Justice for that. And so does every department that does it, and will have to, of course, I have those rules to this, I have to make sure that we, their monies are included in an audit. If they would reach these high thresholds, there'd be a single audit, and at that point we, the expenses would have to come out of the, out of the forfeited funds, if there were any. And if we receive funds, we also have received a percentage of the funds for maintaining this account.
Again, if there's an audit, those kinds of expenses are the task forces, which we pay a portion of to be a part of the task force, but it's not going to be the city's burden, it's the task force's burden.
If it's, if it's a small amount, we'd have to reach a $300,000 threshold, and at that point, there'd be funds in there. Otherwise, it would be included in our audit, and there wouldn't be any cost.
Council, you've heard Ambie's explanation. I would entertain a motion that we approve application of this. Mr. Thomas is making a motion. I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Next up is, for the last several years, the city of Buchanan has been a member of the Buchanan-Upsher Chamber of Commerce, and Ambie's proposing that we do the 2020 membership. I have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries.
When's the annual dinner this year, Rob?
It's usually next year.
It's in March-April timeframe. Try to stay before the Strawberry Festival.
F7, continued discussion and possible approval of preparation of the Home Rule Amendment application for a part-time firefighter, and it should be part-time firefighters. We had a special meeting of council earlier this week, extensive discussion. The fire department is in the midst of developing a comprehensive strategic plan. They want a little more time to think about this and weigh in next spring. So council, my recommendation is, is we put it off till next April, we're not in. Let the fire department continue the development of their strategic plan and see how this may fit in their toolbox. I still think it's a good tool to consider. And we're not kicking the can too far on down the road. Would you all be good with tabling this for the time being?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion that we set do that. I have a motion by Mrs. Buckle, and a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question to table part-time firefighter discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Comments and announcements, Mary Alba has been very quiet tonight. Comments and announcements, Mary Alblaw has been very quiet tonight. Mrs. Buckley, what you got for us?
I just, I'm continuing, gonna have meetings on Monday evenings about downtown Christmas decorations. Had some Burma members came, and it's been discussed, and we're gonna go with the theme of Adventure in Toyland, and we're gonna try to go with that. We're gonna have a meeting hopefully Monday evening at 6 o'clock here, and I've had several people make comments on Facebook, and I would really appreciate if those people would come to my meeting on Monday evening and get involved.
Yeah, good. Maybe Cali could do a piece on that and get it out. We know our website gets lots of hits. Mr. Rylands, what you got?
A lot of things going on the rest of this month. We have the Charlie Harper Muir on Trader's Alley, and subsequent book signing and sales, and then on the 29th, we have a statewide community think tank, 160 people from across the state coming to downtown to plot a course for community development and to tell the story, our story of the path of ascension that we've taken over the last decade, and I think it's a valuable opportunity to tell our story to people, to community developers across this state, and I'm looking forward to those, those activities and our opportunity to, you know, kind of blow our own horn a little bit, but also to, to share the strategies and techniques that we have employed to accomplish these things by, fundamentally by working together and, and giving the credit to anyone who seeks it and deserves it, so.
Sure. Anyway, we can help with that, just say the word. Mr. Skinner? I have no comments this evening. Wow, look at that here. Mr. Thomas, I spoke to.
Yeah, that's right. No pontificating.
Clear to start getting along.
What do you got there? I appreciate what CJ said about the pedestrian. We need to be aware of, drivers especially need to be aware of what they're doing, and there's just too much speeding in town.
Yeah.
And if you go in some neighborhoods, you know, I can, I made a comment years ago, I think, to Jerry Arnold, that I was gonna take a Santa Claus costume and sit in the middle of Hart and Smithfield and try to get people to stop, and he said, David, just give it over, run away. But, but it is, it's, it's really on Lincoln sometimes, and, and Smithfield, and Arnold, and Hart, it's just, people go too fast.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a tragedy someday if we don't start thinking about it, and that's worries. And also with the conversation we had with the sanitation and the board, we need to figure out how to work together with the County Commission for the future. This is gonna be contentious issue, I think, David, at some point in time, but we do need to figure out how to work with them in a good way.
It's, it's a feat in itself.
Yeah.
Anything else, Dave?
Nothing.
Mr. Sanders?
I just want to mention again about the Stockard Youth Center Elimination Dinner on 11/8. I think Pam Buckley was about sold out of all vert tickets, so I'll look into the camera. If you need tickets, come see Randy Sanders.
He's taking her out of the news. Well, I, I also had on my hit list, Stockard Elimination Dinner. If you, we've been averaging close to 14,000 youth hours per month at Stockard, and if you take that times 12, it, it comes out to about 165,000 hours a year. The amount of activity at this little cracker box of a place, I guess the other number that's important, we, with our gifts and pledges to date, we have about $316,000. We hope to know by the end of November, on the Abandoned Mines Land Grant, remember, we've applied for $3.8 million to extend our River Trail, but some of that would be dedicated to Stockard to improve that facility in addition to our $316,000 that we've raised so far. So the point is, get your boyfriend, girlfriend, husband, wife, come out, have a good time, spend 50 bucks, it's, you'll get a great dinner. Proceeds are going to absolutely the best cause imaginable, the kids of our community. It's, just please do it. Lots of Halloween fun, we've talked about that all evening, Dracula, Buckcannon Community Theater at the Colonial, October 24 through 27. The 28th and 29th is the Zombie Walk, starting at the Colonial, crossing Main Street, going down Trader's Alley, it'll be a blast. October 30th, trunk retreat, October 31st, trick or treat, so there you have it. I would entertain a motion that we go into a short executive session to discuss property matters and a possible litigation.
Some moves.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, may I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion on the motion, no. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. There will be no action taken during the executive session, strictly discussion.